I'm going to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:02 PM on Monday, February the 6th. Members present are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmember CO Dillon, Girbaw, McClellan, Mitchell, and Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city treasurer Bennett, city superintendent, engineer Rubel. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we appreciate your attendance. If you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, I would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Moved by Girbaw is their second.
Support by CO. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We have two issues to be discussed this evening. The first is the future of the Building and Engineering Department. The second is OPEB and retiree healthcare costs. Again, as I indicated at the last meeting, as it relates to the first discussion item, I think there'll be some brief comments from our city manager, and then we'll open it up for questions. If it's possible to determine consensus tonight, we will do that. However, I do want to give everyone ample time to think about these issues and to reflect. And so, at the minimum, this will be added as a discussion item at our next council meeting, which is just a week away, and at that time, I do hope to develop consensus. So what I would ask is, if we get to that point, and I'm looking for a path to move forward a week from now, that your statements be very clear, that there be no ambiguity in what your position is. So with that, unless there's anything from me, I will turn it over to the city manager. Please remember to speak into the microphone, because we are recording this. And with that, the floor is yours, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, hopefully, we, from the questions, comments made at the last council meeting, information that you all, additional information maybe you all were looking for, maybe in a different format. This was our, so you have it before you. So, you know, we're here. Eleanor is here as well. She helped put a lot of this together, over in the corner. So you may want to come over this way, Eleanor. Over this, yeah. Well, just over by Gary. So, if there are questions. But in any case, we're here to answer questions best we can, and also, obviously, folks from Carla Wortman, from the county, and as well as York Township are here as well.
And we welcome our guests, and thank you for being here again. As I stated at the last meeting, I don't have any questions. My position has not evolved or changed from our last council meeting. Any additional questions I had, I've asked offline. So may I begin with you, Councilwoman McClellan? Take as much time as you want, and then I'll move to Councilwoman Dillon, and then to Mitchell, CO, Tahar, and Girbaw. And again, please make sure you use the microphone.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate Eleanor putting this together for us, a lot of information to go over. I still like the idea of the hybrid approach. I do appreciate what the county has to offer, just from a layman's standpoint, it seems to be the most easily accessed information. The number of staff that you have that are working seems to be a positive. The administrative support, I did have a question. Can, if we, the city needs to provide an administrative support to the department, would this be helpful to the rest of the staff? Or is this going to, you know, would that be just a position that would be solely for the building department? I kind of had just a quick question about that.
Do you want me to answer that?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we currently have, our assistant clerk is serving in that capacity. She's going, it's, she's, not only is she doing her, attempting to do her duties in the clerk's office, but she's, and this was, you may recall, this was kind of an experiment that we tried when we hired a new assistant clerk, to have their home base be down in the building department to help out at the window and such. And so, currently, she's taking on more building department-type services in the interim is the plan, not full term, because she still has clerk duties to do, clerk's office duties to do as well. But again, this is another one of our attempts, as we continue to, you know, we've consolidated and shared things across departments. So, there is, that continues to be, like I said, right now, she is currently taking on more of the billing than the plan at this point for long-term.
Okay.
And if I could, if I, if I could, Mayor, and I'm glad you started out by saying hybrid, because at the last meeting, a number of councilmembers said hybrid, and I should have asked that, and I apologize that I didn't, but could you all, let me, I want to make sure you all are on, that we're all on the same page. What do you mean by hybrid?
In my, I mean, in my mind, hybrid is some kind of combined approach between having multiple, whether it's the county, Carla Wortman, an on-staff person, it's mashup of, and I think there's different, to me, there's different hybrid approaches here, whether it's the county and then a full-time code enforcement officer, or whether it's Carla Wortman with someone on staff. So, I guess that's, I don't know if that helps you.
Well, I mean, it does. I mean, and I would guess I would ask, as each councilmember takes a turn, if they could elaborate, if that was their position. I just saw, so we better have an understanding, because, I mean, technically speaking, we currently have a hybrid, right? I mean, we utilize other services. I mean, we even contract with the county for electrical. We utilize Pittsfield for plumbing, for instance, and mechanical, you know, and of course, we work with the fire department as well. And though, some of those things would continue, but I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Right, yeah, same language, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and I just think that what the county has laid out, as far as the services that they provide, the way that they provide them, their online presence, all of that is easily translatable to me, as somebody that doesn't know a whole lot about the process of it. It just seems to be, okay, I know, I can go to the county, they're going to provide this, this, and this. I'm sure Carla Wortman is doing the same thing, it's just, it's a little bit more complicated on how that's done, in my mind. So, I like that simplicity of that, I guess, is my, is my opinion. I have another section of questions here. The, I don't know what page this is. When we were, the summary, I guess, outsourcing disadvantages, the major concerns with Carla Wortman, I did, I do see that the customer contact interaction with the city, the limited, the limited response times, then the slower response times, I think that's kind of an issue for me. And then, so I just starred that one.
What page are you on?
I am on the summary page.
I see.
That's just one that I starred, that I kind of felt that way about that option as I think that's it for me for right now.
Speaker McClellan, would you mind passing the microphone down to Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you, Elle, for all your hard work on this. I have to say, though, I'm still kind of a little confused about certain things, so bear with me, if the information's in here, maybe I'm just not reading it right. As far as the city is concerned, where do we, do we have a line item for a code enforcement, or is that a separate issue?
Well, that's included in the budget.
In, in just our?
Right here, in the 325, where it says, current city operations, this is on the subset.
Okay, right.
Where it says $1,300 at $25, $25 an hour. That one part-time employee would be for the.
Okay, so that's a code, so then where is our clerk's salary?
That's not, that's in the clerk's department, that's, there's no.
That's, it's, okay, it's falling under someone else's budget.
Correct.
Okay. And how much time can we allot from that job duty for building?
Well, again, it's, I, do you have a, do you know a percentage, Terry, off the top of your head? Because again, her home base is there, her computer's there at the window, and the intent is that she does all of her duties, and she, from time to time, especially during election times, are just going to be more time spent out of the office, but.
Currently, I would say she's spending about 60% of her time doing this, but part of that is because she got this laid in her lap and doesn't really know everything that she needs to know to do the job swiftly and effectively. She also works for Bob at the wastewater treatment plant, she codes his bills and does stuff like that. So when we learned that Tillman was leaving, she took on as much as she could learn in a short amount of time, but she is still learning the clerk's duties, and then we had to add on the planning commission and the building department. So it's, it's been overwhelming for her, so she's not going as quickly, so it may be less in the future, but right now, I would say she's spending at least 60 to 70% of her time doing building department stuff, but it does take a while. She's trying to train me in also, so.
Right. No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that this isn't taking her away from, and right now it is, it's taking her away from her other duties.
Well, if I, if I, not to interrupt, but again, as I said, the intent is, whichever direction we have going, then that, that would lessen significantly, because again, she won't have to be helping to fill in the gaps during the interim period.
Okay. And then, excuse me. I had read that, this is on note two, so I think this goes over Carla. So, currently, as it stands with city, we're keeping all of our permit fees, and that's just getting rolled back into our own expenses? Like, are we going to be at an operating loss, then? Or is it just covering our own expenses?
So currently, for instance, $50 permit, we keep 15 and pay the inspector 35. So for both Carla Wortman and the county, I believe they're at 65. So that would be, I mean, the city, city would be using, getting, well, losing, if you will, losing or paying all our revenue. The county's a little bit different, in that they would just automatically go there, to the county, and pay, we just don't have that, we don't see that revenue at all. With Carla Wortman, they would, they would still pay the city, and then we would turn around and pay Carla Wortman for their services, I know, for instance, their monthly retainer basis, as well as then per inspection and the like. So, at least that's, that's how I understand it. So that revenue source is eliminated, but at the same time, those, those specific inspection services are, will be paid for by those fees.
Okay.
But again, that goes away from, we, with the two, those two scenarios, those two leading scenarios with Carla Wortman and County, the city will not see any of that revenue, and it's about a 30% increase.
Okay. My next question was, and I'm kind of just sticking with the current city plan, was the issues raised by the assessor's office and software, and whether or not, how that's going to translate, do we have any idea how that's going to work?
Well, we did have the responses, but I guess, what I would encourage is to ask Carla Wortman and the county to let, let you, I know Carla Wortman utilizes BSNA, so that shouldn't be an issue, but the county has a different type of software, so that I, and I think they did address that, but certainly, I'm sure they'd be happy to address that question again.
Would you like to, why don't you come forward to the table if you wouldn't mind? Kristin, if you want to lend her your microphone? Thank you.
Actually, I think our equalization department uses BSNA. We have access to that program, and what I had, I had read these concerns of your clerk, there's no reason why I can't provide her copies of permits daily, weekly, monthly, however she wants them, to deal with her assessing issues. I do that now for other jurisdictions, I provide those.
Okay.
So, but we do have access to the equalization system, and we can nightly upload, every night, from that system into our permitting system. So we should have the most current information.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess, and then my last question is sort of just a real broad one, Todd, for you, which is about liability of when there's issues that come back. With the county, they're absorbing any liability, correct? It does not fall back to the city. Now with Carla Wortman, are they a contractor to the city, then, at this point, so that we would share liability issues?
Well, I would argue that, you know, if there's a super, they usually name as many people as they can, but certainly, the county being the, becoming the city's planning arm, if you will, or not plan, but inspection, building inspection arm, I'm sorry, certainly with any, any agreement that we would have contractually or otherwise with Carla Wortman, we would require them to name us as additional insured for the service, but certainly, there's always that liability, but because we are, whether it's directly or indirectly providing that service.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, I mean, as I said, so there's always going to be at least some level of liability.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
I have a question regarding page three of the packet, and I'm exquisitely aware that we're discussing some operations issues, and we want to focus on policy issue. Under the second major bullet point, city hall building maintenance will need to be reassigned to another city employee, and it looks like that would be the DPW director. And this would be, in this case, if we did not keep our current city operations, then this maintenance would be moved to our, is that correct, to DPW?
Well, correct, it could be, we've had discussions both ways of, I mean, DPW, they do some of our fixes already, but some of the discussion has been either DPW director or the city engineer, since he's on site. But there are, to that point, there is a whole host of items that would need to be covered if we go outside of our current, you know, in-house. So there are, and we, I believe in the initial work session, we provided, there was a few pages of yellow highlights and such, I believe, that had, that talked about the tasks that will need to be reassigned and reallocated. Right there, that's it.
And have you, just to follow up, have you had a chance to ask Mr. Fordice about that workflow change?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think he's here right now, is that correct?
That's correct.
What are his thoughts on that shift?
Well, well, I mean, it's, it's additional duties where, when you have a plate that's already overflowing, so, but it is what it is, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman CO?
Yes, thank you. I had several questions, and the one was already asked about the assessor's office. But apparently, she still has a concern in that regard, it appears to me from her memo about the timely flow of information back and forth between whatever the building department, whatever the permitting system is, and her assessing system. So that provides me with some concern. Looking at, is it Ellie? Is that how you pronounce your name? Ellie, okay, I'm sorry. Looking at your attachment number one, one of the spreadsheet of the costs, do I understand this correctly, that the, that the in parentheses, then, would be the net cost to the city?
A page you have, Mr. CO.
Number two, attachment one, from the current packet. So the cheapest would be to go with Pittsfield Township, although that doesn't provide a lot of the service, right?
Correct.
So the second cheapest, then, would be to stay with our own in-house people, is that not correct?
That would be correct with these numbers.
Yeah, okay. But there's some reason to add something more or take something away from these numbers? Is that what I hear in your hesitancy to?
No, I, I mean, that.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, the numbers that we have, that we have in the proposals.
Yeah. This is the way it looks.
This is the way it looks.
Okay. And then I also note that there's a 30% increase in the permitting cost if we go with the county or Carlisle.
That's my understanding with the numbers that we have, for both the county and Carla Wortman, the fees would be increased by 30%.
Yeah, okay. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. CO. You can keep the microphone. Mr. Tahar?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so a couple of my questions have been, have been touched on already. I do want to go back, though, just to, to one little more thing about the possibility that the DPW would cover city hall maintenance, would, I would imagine that that would cost us more to operate the DPW department if we add that responsibility to the, to their already overflowing plate, or it could. It could mean additional cost to the city. We also have, so that's part of, the larger question is, if we went outside the city, there would be, we have, there's a list in the packet of the things that would not be covered by outsourcing, so that looking at the numbers on the top sheet don't necessarily tell us the full story of costs. That, that, for example, the Washtenaw County number of $57,149 is the total of the costs shown here, but it does not necessarily include what would be additional cost to the city for covering the services that are currently covered in the building operations. Is that, am I on the right path here?
Well, sure, I mean, there are, again, Gary, help me, I'm going to, I'm probably going to miss a couple of things. As far as the tasks, I mean, the biggest things in these would be the inspections and site plan reviews, those types of things, plan, I should say, plan reviews. Those dollars, majority of those dollars would go away to outside. So, Gary, if you want to add any more detail to that response.
Yeah, some of the, excuse me, some of the larger costs will be with the installation and providing of the water meters, which is done through the building department, and we collect that. It's easily coordinated, because it's sort of one-stop shopping when you come in for a building permit, from the site plan all the way through to certificate of occupancy, and we make all the arrangements for the engagement of all the associated services. For the furnishing of the water meter is just one of them, final inspection of the, you know, when they install the water shut-offs, and especially in new developments, make sure that the sewer connection inspection's been done properly. There would be a disconnect in any communication where outside agencies to work with the DPW, probably, in coordinating these events in a timely manner especially, and then the reporting back and forth, and to maintain things in proper accord with the record, somehow it's all got to end up back in the files. So it would be quite complex and prone to probably some inaccuracies, to say the least.
Mr. Tahar?
Okay, yep, thank you. So I'll go back to the last time we discussed this in the discussion portion of the meeting, of our, of our last council meeting. My main concern is good service, and, you know, at a, what, policy level, good, clear service, clear path for customers to all of the services they need from our building department. And in some ways, I would really like to be able to stop there and say, city manager, that's your job, and the building department's job, to figure out how to structure the department for the current situation, and looking down the road for possible other staff change, staffing changes, new hires, adding back a code enforcement officer, but I'm not sure, I'm still not comfortable saying, this is the way it ought to be done, but, but my priority would be for a clear path to really good service across the board. You know, I think about a couple of years ago, when, when the treasurer and finance operation was reorganized, as I recall, city council said, go forth and reorganize, but we didn't tell you how to do it. So that's, that's, in one, one respect, anyway, that's, that's where I'm coming from still. That's it for now.
Could I, real quick? Yes, real quick, and I appreciate that, and the reason, because you, I couldn't agree more, I mean, certainly as an operations, however, because it is a significant policy change, if we are to go, instead of in-house, to contracting out, per se, then that's, that's the biggest reason, wanting to bring it to you all, because that, there are, anytime you, anytime you change, there are, there are going to be some, some pros and cons, like with anything, and certainly, there would be, well, I mean, we've, unfortunately, even when we kept it in-house a few years ago, we reduced, you know, when we reduced staffing, we reduced our walk-in hours, just because, so, because we had, you know, we went from five people in that department to two. And so, to still maintain reasonable walk-in hours, and also, the time to allow Gary and Tillman to get their work done, their other work, I mean, of course, it's all their work, right? We understand that, but, but they need to have some sit-down time behind their desk, right, to do plan reviews and do staff reviews for planning commission, et cetera, et cetera, and work with developers and business owners and residential folks that are wanting things. So, so we had to do that already, so there is, has been a decrease, if you will, in the level of service, I mean, but we still continue to have a top-notch service. But yeah, there certainly is some, there's, there's concern that if we do something different, then, especially, I mean, I certainly, I think, you know, would the county serve our residents well, would Carla Wortman serve, yes, I'm sure, I'm sure they would. However, especially the ancillary things that Gary has talked about with the water meters. And so, those connections still have to be made, and now there's, and so there's going to be one last person, if you will, on city staff to make sure that happens. So, I mean, we, we certainly will, as we always do, we always pull together and get it done, but certainly would be, there'd be some challenges, especially in the front end, to get, to get used to that change.
Any further, Mr. Tahar?
No, that's, that's it.
Good, okay. Mr. Girbaw?
Yeah, I would like to just, for my oversight of this aspect, is just to agree with Ms. Tahar, is that I've been looking at how we can operate better and more effectively, and in part of the strategic plan meeting, was my idea that we need to focus on priorities of operations and so forth, and we needed to be able to do what we can do best in-house, and what we can do best using other activities. So when I look at these five different scenarios, I mean, some of my questions are asking is, all right, so we had Carlisle Wortman do the entire function for us. When I see note four, how much of those activities just involve our building services, or does it take away some of the activities that are currently being done by the city superintendent slash engineer? I mean, when I look at this, I know this bottom line refers to just the building inspection and code enforcement, but as a result of some of these functions being realigned, it starts to raise a question for me as to what's left in terms of responsibilities for the city engineer and superintendent, when we're looking at how much we've subsidized this whole operation over the last 20 years. There's numbers missing from this, and I'm trying to find out what would be the reality of what's left over after we would shift some of these over, and I know that's coordinating some of these functions, but really is understanding what is left at the city superintendent slash engineer.
Sure, sure. Well, and a couple, I'm going to hit the high points, not get into the job description, but for instance, you've got the responsibilities that would still need to be fulfilled, zoning official process review, respondent zoning request, certificate of compliance, detailed reviews and draft reports for lot uses, planning coordinator, the staff liaison of the planning commission, CBA, process site plans on our land use requests, C representative, of course, which is, again, smaller, but again, the Watts, Watts Board Technical Committee, again, as I mentioned, staff liaison to zoning board of appeals. Again, as I mentioned, staff liaison to zoning board of appeals, certainly a big part of helping to manage the cemetery, mapping coordinator, he's our M dot street administrator, our traffic engineer, he's our, that position also continues to handle our fee book, review, annual review and updates. Of course, key to our, helping develop our annual capital improvement, especially for the larger items. And consultant engineering services, you know, they continue, you know, certainly he serves as the city engineer as well, for those aspects. So, while there are certain, some of the smaller projects he's actually helped design versus the bigger ones where he helps coordinate them and manage them to make sure that hopefully we're getting what we're supposed to get and...
So really, we need somebody that's a coordinator for these activities in terms of, and having that responsibility. So looking at Carlisle Wortman, isn't that some of our intent, that they would perform some of those functions? Because looking at their three-hundred-thousand-dollar proposal, we're saying that they're not going to be doing some of those additional functions as part of that proposal?
Well, they would do, for instance, and Craig certainly, Craig was wrong, happy to come up here if you'd like, but, you know, I mean, they would, it's not included in the current cost, and for instance, to serve as the liaison to the planning commission with CBA. Now, they may do that, but that would be for additional, they do have additional fees in their proposal for attending meetings. So, you know, that's how we understand the proposal.
Currently, under contract now for planning services, correct?
Correct.
That wouldn't change, as far as I know.
Right, but that, but again, they're not at every meeting, you know, so, and that, well, now, well, maybe, right now, the things are picking up, but, but...
If there's a substantive issue, they're usually...
Right, right.
And then, of course, if we were to move to, like, county, fee reviews would be done by the county, so we would no longer have that responsibility, except for maybe some minor permits or things that we do. And I mean, and that's where I'm looking at, and when you look at each of these scenarios, my assumption would be, in some cases, we potentially could, we could reduce the level of requirements that we need as city superintendent, because some of these functions are no longer being supervised, and at that level of management, having that kind of person in place is no longer required, because a lot of those supervisory activities are being moved to another organization.
I can, I can respond to that, if you like.
I guess. Go ahead, Ms. Tihar.
Yeah, basically, the options are for taking over building department duties, but as far as the building inspector goes on staff, he's responsible for basically all of his work. I don't really perform the functions of the building inspector, and basically, almost all of my time is performing the planning, my zoning reviews, planning commission, I mean, in engineering services. If anything, going to, an option will increase demands of my time and make life much more demanding and restrict my time on the duties that I should perform, as Mr. Campbell listed there. So, in essence, it'll much increase my workload, it won't relieve me of work.
My other question on this is, understanding from the county's perspective, is that going online, building permits and so forth, would be available online? We currently do not have that function, correct?
We have the software.
You have the software, but...
We have the software, we need to make that last budget, and we've been waiting for the amount that was made, the available money that, and having the service there to take the rate, we put it out, but the software is purchased.
So that would be another software package we would have to maintain? We purchased it, but we would have to maintain it and continue...
Except, there's an eight-hundred-dollar a year...
And would it be just, that's just another piece that I wanted to know, because I think that's one of the benefits of the county was from that perspective, which I would think, then would have that information available for our assessor to be able to look at immediately online, instead of having to look at paper copies. So again, looking at this as overall viewpoint, I know, one of my questions was in terms of the number of permits being requested just by citizens, and I believe that was around fifty or so a year, maybe a little more, where the majority of everything else was being done by contractors, which, knowing our contractors, were probably working the most with the county in terms of getting their activities. Again, I agree with Ms. Tihar and members of the council, that I think, from my perspective of a hybrid operation, was to look at a component, namely, the county, from the perspective of, they have more staff on time, they're redoing, they're doing the fees. A lot of these items are being taken off, so that we can focus specifically on some of those items. And that coordination piece, it sounds more to me that that's more of an administrative function, and not necessarily so much at the level of an engineer, and that could be handled through our use of one of our staff people that we currently have. Again, that's just how I've seen it, envisioned it, and looking at your recommendation, it's just, I think there's a lot of functions that need to be done by people that are, you know, qualified to do them at a level that may be lesser, and not necessarily have to be done at the super-high level. And I think that's where, if we look at the expertise in the Washtenaw County aspect, or even if we look at Carlisle Wortman, that would help free us up to stay focused on what we need to stay focused on. And as for the building question, have we even looked at the potential of contracting part of that service out? I'm concerned from the perspective of, we've had a number of building issues that just have never been identified and continue to become an issue, and either we don't have an expertise in the build, in, within the house, and we need to look outside to be able to prepare ourselves for avoiding the costs that we're looking at. So, as it turns to try and shift that over to the DPW, or even keep it underneath the city engineer, I don't see that as even the best potential solution.
If I could, if you could apologize, but if you could elaborate on specific concerns?
Well, we've got three roofs that are, two roofs that are failed. Potentially, we don't know what else is going to come down the road, and we're talking about just the operations of overlooking our buildings and understanding what the problems are with them. I mean, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it may be millions, to fix something that, if we had maybe a better look, or an expecting, or an individual that was actually doing preventive maintenance on a regular basis, and not necessarily being filled in it by somebody, because we needed to basically either backfill a position, because there wasn't work to do it, or because then all of a sudden, there was no one to do it. If we had somebody that was regularly doing that type of work, I think, long run, we'd be more cost-effective. And that's just my viewpoint of seeing that, again, getting back to, get the right people, the right organization, and the backup to support those functions will be cost-effective in the long run.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm done.
I have a question or a point of information. I think the, and Dean, I, Mr. Gurbah, I think what you're talking about are buildings that, when we contracted with the builders, we did not have additional independent oversight of those inspections? And, and I could be thinking incorrectly, but Mr. Campbell, what we're talking about here is, is different than the scenario that Mr. Gurbah is talking about, is that correct?
If I, if I, I think it's a combination. It's, we do hire when we have contracts and stuff, the city engineer steps in and helps assist with some of that.
Okay.
But we also have our buildings that could potentially have maintenance problems and things like that, that should have been discovered or seen much more sooner, or could have been assessed as part of the overall reviews. And if we have that expectation of that, again, maybe we're looking at somebody being held responsible for it. But I think we have so many things going on, and so many pieces, that when it comes to certain things, and, you know, maybe even providing our own backup and review, we don't have that ability to do that. And I think also, that is an issue with, even with a building inspector, I would have hoped that our building inspector was actually doing his own inspecting of our own projects to make sure that we know that things are being signed and things are being resolved, and we've been running into that problem on every process, and so now's the time to try and address that issue, because it's been, happened three times in the last ten years. So there's really a concern that we need to be able to understand how to function better. And that is one of the functions.
Mr. Rubel?
Yeah, I can respond to that also, in fact, that, the case of the rec center roof, it's constructed in nineteen ninety, it's a flat roof, and we all know that flat roofs don't last long, no matter what material they're made from, and certainly not the fault of any inspector at the time, because at the time, it's new, it doesn't leak, it functions very well, but time takes its toll. So, I don't think there's any amount of inspection when something's new, or even that follows up, that you can actually say was the fault of the inspector. Now, a lot of facilities do building, have building maintenance programs, but that's within the maintenance program within the facility. And certainly, if the city wanted to have, hire maintenance staff to go around and monitor these inventory things regularly, have checklists, certainly you can, you can do that. Some industries do that, as sort of, you know, troubleshooting, but the city's never adopted a program for that, specifically for that. And besides, roof leaking is a longevity issue, and not a person issue, it has to do with the weather, the elements, materials degrade over time. And flat roofs basically don't last that long. As you can notice, we even have problems here at city hall. In the case of the DPW, was an architectural design that didn't quite work, and the contractor didn't know how to handle it. And certainly, you can't say, the inspector that, after it's built, that inspector should have known, because there's no way they know, because it's between the architect and the, and the builder, to build according to specification.
Thank you for, for that clarification, Mr. Rubel. I would, I would state, however, that, you know, I personally don't assign blame to any existing staff member or previous staff member, as it relates to the rec center roof, but as the analysis showed, there was, I'm not going to sugarcoat this, because I don't think there's any way to sugarcoat it, there was incompetence at many levels, as it relates to the, the installation and design of that roof, both when it was constructed and when there was renovation in two thousand and six. So, I appreciate your comments, I don't necessarily want to get off on that tangent, unless anyone has additional questions. Again, what, this is my expectation, is that this will be added as a discussion item at our next council meeting, that gives you plenty of time to digest this additional information that staff prepared, specifically Al, and Al, we appreciate your efforts on this, and to ask any questions through the city manager's office. I will be looking for very specific positions when we reconvene as a council, again, a week from today, and again, it will appear as a discussion item at the end of our regular meeting agenda. With that, Mr. Rubel, our guests, from Washtenaw County, from York Township, and Carlisle Wortman, we appreciate your time very much, thank you. And we're going to move on now to OPEB and retiree healthcare. And Mickey Joe, do you want to join us? And I believe we have some guests here to help us on this issue, and we would welcome them to join us as well. How many do we have, Mickey Joe?
I have a slew of guests. I have Martin from our auditing firm.
Janet, why don't you move down one, if you wouldn't mind?
So I have Martin from Plant Moran, Sue Feinberg from MERS, and Nancy Farnum from our legal attorney, and then I also have invited Dave Hudson from Cap'n Nick Insurance. And we're gonna start it off with what the future is holding for what we finally refer to as OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. And in the most part, that's going to cover health insurance for retirees, and when we say retirees, they must qualify for the retirement age of, to meet the MERS requirements. And then, life insurance, but the big one, obviously, the elephant in everyone's room, and then the nation, is healthcare costs. So, Todd, unless, I'm sorry, I just kind of took over, but, as you're eating your sandwich. I thought we would start with Martin's presentation, who he just handed out a little bit, that the government accounting standings board is making new requirements, and this is going to start impacting our financial statements, very similar to the way our unfunded liability for our pension cost did. And so I thought we'd start with Martin to discuss what's going to happen, address those questions, and then we'll move to what we're doing, and then we'll kind of turn it over to Dave about possible solutions to help curb additional costs. So, since we're at lack of time, we're just going to go ahead and get started with what's happening with OPEB, if we're...
Excellent. Martin, it's all you, my friend, thank you for being here.
Good evening, thank you for having me. So, I'll just dive right in. So, the new standards are gonna come in and affect the city's financial statements, starting with the two thousand and eighteen statements, so you still have a little bit of time, but it's definitely good to plan, and I know we've been talking about it for a couple of years. So the slides that you'll see, some of them probably look familiar to you, some of them are excerpts from previous documentation provided in the past. So slide number two shows a snippet from the management letter from the last audit that we did, and it kind of shows the comparison of what the statements look like now, and this is a full accrual statement, so it has no impact on your general fund and your individual funds, the way you account for, with the exception of the enterprise funds, the water and sewer will be affected, and then the full accrual, the citywide statements. So again, the way you budget, the way you do things on a day-to-day basis, it will not be affected. So here is a snippet, so as reported currently, overall, the city does report, and this is in total, the net investments capitalized are about forty million dollars, restricted portion's about four million, and the unrestricted's about three-point-two million, which a lot of it is the pension that you have at the city. So the total net position is forty-point-seven million dollars. So if, when the new standards come into effect, using the numbers from two thousand and sixteen, that unrestricted portion, instead of three-point-two million, will actually increase to about eleven million dollars. And that increases the liability that's projected to be for the other post-employment benefits. To break this out a little bit more, what I did for tonight's meeting, I prepared the next slide, just to kind of show you the comparison of like, what actually, what the liability looks like. So the first couple of columns show as the statements were for two thousand and sixteen, and then the detail on the right, the great highlights are the changes that will be effective once two thousand and eighteen is established with the OPEB standards. So OPEB liability for governmental activities will be about six-point-seven million dollars, I use the same proportion as for the pension, and then the business type will be about one-point-one million. So the total liability's about seven-point-eight million dollars as of June thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen. Pretty substantial. However, if you look at your total net position, again, it is still going to be positive. That means your assets do outweigh the liabilities that you have, even with the open liability that will be recorded. And some of the other items that I have from the other slides, on slide number four, that's the footnote from the June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen statements, and actually shows that unfunded liability of seven-point-eight million dollars at the bottom of that chart. This is in the footnotes of the financial statements. And then the very last item, the very last slide, just talks about the standard that is going to be effective for two thousand and eighteen and what it entails. It's very similar to the pension standards that were implemented a couple of years ago. So that's all I had, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. The one item that I did forget to mention is, currently, the city has been preparing the calculation on their own, we've been auditing that calculation. However, we do encourage all our clients, our municipal clients, to have an exuary perform the calculation, because right now, it's an estimate. I think if an exuary prepares the analysis, it'd be a lot more exact, and it's going to be, you know, since it's going to be affecting your financial statements. Right now, it's a footnote disclosure, but it's actually going to be recorded on your statements.
You recommend that we do that this upcoming fiscal year?
So, our recommendation is definitely do it for two thousand and seventeen, because you'll have to have the comparative data for two thousand and eighteen.
Your requirements, okay. Thank you, Martin. Let's go around really quick, if there are any questions, we'll start with Mr. Gurbah, then move to Tihar, CEO, Dylan and McCallan, and Mitchell, I'm sorry, Mitchell will be after CEO.
I know you're mentioning that, you know, we show a total net position, but the reality is, we'd have to sell assets, like either the water system, or our parks, or whatever, to cover some of this liability. So, if we were to really look at cash in hand, and try to attempt to try and cover this liability, we're significantly short.
If you want to pay the liability immediately, yes. The, it's kind of, it's similar to the pension, as long as you're paying into the system, as long as you're paying on an annual basis your required minimum payments, it's kind of like a mortgage payment, you're still staying on top, but I do agree that technically there's a liability. If you wanted to pay down that liability and make it zero, you technically have to sell some assets in order to do that.
And I mean, and as we look at, we don't know what the market returns are going to be and so forth, so there is this issue of, yes, we know they're trying to project forward, but this potential liability, as you have said, is really hanging out there and is becoming a bigger issue, because even today, the Crane's Business News sent out an article talking about the state, looking at how they're going to be trying to attempt to try and attach, or attack these items, and it'll be interesting to see what will happen. I just want to point out that this does not look as pretty as it looks, just saying that we have $32 million still, we still have a big debt outstanding.
Significant, you're right, the returns are not what, who knows what the returns are going to be. Hopefully, they're going to be better than projected, but the recent history has not been showing that. So, the returns have been diminishing over time, for sure.
Mr. Har, any questions?
No, at this point, thanks.
Okay, Mr. CEO, any questions?
Again, just for full disclosure, what we're discussing tonight are both the health insurance benefit, and the life insurance benefit, is that correct?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking that is because, as a retiree myself, I do take the retirement benefit, but I do not take the health insurance benefit, certainly. And my understanding, as you checked, I'm not a recipient of the life insurance benefit, is that right?
Correct.
So, I'm cleared to enter into discussions on these matters.
Very good, thank you, Councilmember CEO. Ms. Mitchell?
No questions.
No questions. Ms. Dylan, you want to wait for a microphone, and Mickey Jo, why don't you pass yours over?
That's okay. Do we have any idea, like, how off we might be with an actuary's numbers?
To be honest, until you go through the calculation, can't tell. But there's a lot of things that can affect that calculation, so a lot of communities have been negotiating, you know, in their contract renewals, to try and reduce some of those costs, change providers, et cetera. And again, the investment returns are going to affect the calculation drastically as well.
The spreadsheet that we have is approved by Government Accounting Standing Boards, and was presented by Plant Moran, it's not something we're calculating.
Right.
It is a spreadsheet, because of the smallness of our community, we can't do that, and we can have our people out for this process to be coming forward.
But our percentage of overall funded liability?
Our, the percentage of our funded liability dropped from where we used to be around 80% to down to near 70, or 67?
We're not talking pension, we're talking other post-employment.
That's right.
Your own pension.
But we also have this potential of being an unfunded percentage, too.
Yes, but the drop was not, not OPEB, it was pension.
Ms. Dylan, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Ms. McCallon?
No questions.
No questions? Mickey Jo, I'm going to turn it back over to you, unless, Martin, do you have anything further?
That's all I had.
Excellent presentation, information's very helpful.
Okay, just for a synopsis of where, what we've done, and what we currently are planning on doing, are, and maybe, Todd, you may want to address this, but the current bargaining unit contracts, and everyone does not, the city has ceased providing retirement healthcare for any, for new employees. So, there is only the current retirees that are out there now, and as I'll quickly explain it, and then when we talk about it later, when Dave explains it, we have the retirees that require, under MERS retire, which means they meet their full qualifications of retirement that are entitled to health insurance. The contracts also provide that if your spouse has insurance, then the city doesn't provide it, for those people who are still working. That date, I believe, was 2008, so anyone that came in after 2008 will not, this won't be an issue for them. So, we have already started to close the, you know, we're not continuing this, we've stopped the bleeding, I guess is how I want to say that. But we still have retirees who have served many, you know, over 20 years plus, for more of them, that are receiving these benefits. We have those retirees who retire as what we consider an early retirement, at age 50 or 55, and they go into, you know, providing insurance, we provide insurance to them and their spouse, if their spouse doesn't have it, but I think most of our contracts state that if your spouse has insurance, you'll cover their insurance. But in our liability study, we still have to keep them in there as a potential, because if something happens to that spouse, we would still have to provide that. So, there's a number of those. We also have, if there are two employees that work for the same employer in the city, and we have a couple of couples that do work for the city, myself included, only one of them will receive healthcare, you're only paying for one of them. But in the event that would, something would happen to myself, my husband is also entitled, so he has to stay into that actuarial and that potential liability. So, we have, we have made changes in all the contracts going forward, we have also put our RFPs to have an actuarial done, and then we've also asked Dave from Cap'n Nick Insurance to review our existing retirees, and the coverages that they have. As you all are aware, and I address this in my memo, we do a healthcare works, we do a healthcare with our current bargaining units, where we bring everybody from all the tape, you know, from the teamsters, from the staff, and from the police units together, and we review the healthcare that Cap'n Nick Insurance goes out and does. We don't have currently, we don't do that to our existing retirees. What they retired under is what we've left them at. And I'm going to turn it over to Dave now, who I think is going to propose some ideas on certain ways that we could have, similar to our open house and open enrollment for employees, that we could possibly do some open enrollment for retirees, and there could be some potential cost savings there. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Thank you. Great question?
Andy, I just want to just touch back, when you referred to spouses having insurance, are they required, if that spouse has higher insurance, or they don't like that type of insurance, are they required to take that, or how is that working out, or are we paying for that on their behalf? I guess I was just a little confused on how you worded it.
Is it coordination of benefits?
No, it's not a coordination of benefits, it means specifically, I'm not exactly sure what your question is. For the people, certain contracts will say that if your spouse has got insurance, and it doesn't have to be better than ours, that you have to be covered under their insurance.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, so...
However, what I'm saying is still a potential liability, is that if something happened to that person's spouse, or that coverage, we would still have to be able to plan long-term for them. So, this long-term liability has to include them in the study.
Right.
In the actuarial.
Do we have numbers as to who falls into that category? Okay, thank you.
Actually, if you want to give that microphone to Dave, thank you for being here.
Okay, last week, we sat down and discussed, started forming ideas, I won't call it a plan yet, but ideas as to what we really should be discussing here. And so, the first thing I wanted to sort of bring up is that we have essentially two types of retirees. We have our age 65 retirees, also, I call them Medicare eligible retirees, and then we have our below 65 retirees that don't really have access to the Medicare program. Much of our focus to date has been talking about, is there a way to expand, excuse me, expand our Medicare Advantage offering? So, right now, we have a HMO Medicare Advantage program, that we have a number of retirees on, and then we have, within our other suffixes, our non-Medicare, our non-Medicare Advantage program, we have about, I think, five total retirees, and looking at those employees could, or those retirees, could we move them into a Medicare Advantage program and save money? And the short answer is, yes, we can. The longer answer is that that program wouldn't necessarily be a good fit for those people, meaning we have, I think, Texas, Kentucky, some other locations across the country, where our current program will not allow them to really have coverage, it's just, it won't work for them. So, expanding or moving people into our current arrangement is a possibility, but it's not a complete answer. So, the second thing we need to consider is, if we want to continue down the path of the Medicare Advantage, is to most likely offer a Medicare Advantage product that takes advantage of the PPO platform, which will allow for access basically across the country. The proposal for that is actually pending, I do have numbers back, but it was missing a couple of components, so it made the proposal not helpful for tonight. But it is something that is in process, and should be available here in the coming weeks. So, those are the sort of two things, or two thought processes with regards to Medicare Advantage, so one component. Continuing with the Medicare age individuals, there are some companies, some municipalities, some entities that will basically end retiree coverage at age 65. I'm not suggesting this is a good idea, what I'm suggesting is, it's a strategy that's used out there. I think the belief for the thought process behind it is that Medicare, if designed properly, and you get the appropriate supplemental programs or gap plans, can be very good, and frankly, they can be pretty cost-effective. So, some organizations will basically get out of the retiree business by ending coverage availability at age 65. And obviously, there's more to that, meaning depending on what our contracts say, you know, that may not really be an option, but it's something that is out there. The third, or really, the last, second part of it, I should say, of the retirees is moving to our non-Medicare age people. And one of the things the Affordable Care Act did was, it provided individual insurance options that were difficult to find previous to the Affordable Care Act. Many plans had pre-existing conditions, or they wouldn't even consider somebody of certain age or certain conditions. So, that's one thing the Affordable Care Act did that was really nice. And because of that, there's a thought process that, you know, a lot of companies decided to dump their retiree programs, or just felt that they could move people to the marketplace or individual market and accommodate that. And again, I'm not sure that we can do that, but it's a strategy to try and move people out there. And I'll come back to the Affordable Care Act, because obviously, the outfit in the room is that we have a new regime or new president who doesn't think highly of it. One, I sat in this meeting several months ago, and I explained to you that we have a new underwriting model with Blue Cross and Blue Care Network, and that underwriting model hurt us from a renewal standpoint for our actives. Now, I'm going to sit here and say, actually, it could provide us some assistance if we're trying to reduce our retiree costs, because the Blue Care Network side, the HMO side, the rate, the rating model came down, and it was not one of the plans, or not one of the options that the committee really wanted to go. But if we looked at this, we can, we could potentially find a plan that would be less expensive than the current offerings that are out there, and at least something to consider. Now, the downside is, again, Blue Care Network's an HMO, so if we're talking about our people in Texas and Kentucky, it's not a viable option. So, if we're going to consider that, we're going to have to look at probably offering at least two options, the HMO and a PPO. Right now, we're sort of shotgun, we have suffixes open everywhere to accommodate language such as you get what you retired under, and, you know, not to sound heartless, that problem will eventually go away, but, you know, not for a while, I think. And then, as far as, let's see, I just lost my place here. Sorry, I think there should be some true consolidation, so again, we're all over the place in this consolidation. Most employers aren't, don't have seven or eight open suffixes for retirees, it's you get this plan, or you get this plan, in most cases, it's you get this plan only. So, I think that there's room for consolidation in there, which I know that not only could it help from a pricing standpoint, but administrative costs that the city is investing, now that I think we have 17 suffixes with Blue Cross, is pretty significant. Moving away from Medicare and our non-Medicare age people, I just want to address the Affordable Care Act. Obviously, President Trump is not a fan of it, he ran on a platform that said he was going to repeal it and replace it, and that he has a secret plan that will be great for everybody. And until we see what his plan is, obviously, we don't know what to expect, but I do think that we need to watch this carefully. Supposedly, you know, information is going to be available this month for what his plan looks like, we will see if that comes true or not, but it is certainly a consideration as we're evaluating everything. And I don't know what the timing is exactly, where we want to address things, but this could get pretty messy here in the next couple of years, if we're trying to unravel the Affordable Care Act, which I know we have to play within the rules, but some of the options I'm discussing today may not be realities, or we may have options that we're not aware of. Mickey Jo already mentioned this, retiree opinion, so I think one of the nice things that has worked out very well is the Healthcare Committee, for the active employees that get together, they look at options, they have a voice when they've decided what they think makes sense. It seems to be a very unified opinion that comes to council for consideration. I think that obviously, you would want to consider trying to do something like that if we're trying to make any changes to our program here. And these people have worked for the city for a long time, they were valuable employees, they're valuable members of our community, we don't want to give any sort of opinion or idea that they're not, their opinion doesn't matter. And then, retiree contributions, I think this might be the path of lowest resistance, is that, my understanding, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but most retirees aren't contributing really anything to the cost of the insurance, which is option that is out there. But I think that as an active employee, and a lot of retirees are contributing to the cost of medical insurance some way, I think most retirees would understand that the cost of insurance continues to go up year over year, and that ask them to contribute some amount would not be an unreasonable request, and some of them frankly may be expecting that request of them. So, it's at least something to consider. You know, it's not the end-all, it won't solve the unfunded problem we're talking about here, but it's at least would be progress in a direction of trying to curb our exposures over time.
Anything else, Dave?
No.
A lot of good suggestions there. Let's open it up for questions, I started at the end last time, I put Mr. Gierbohn on the spot. Ms. McCallon, do you have any questions for Mr. Hudson?
I appreciate you coming, and then the thorough explanation, but I don't have any questions at this time.
Ms. Dylan?
I'm sorry, my cold medicine's not really taking full effect right now, so, what I wanted to know, and it's probably going to have to be for legal councils, what is our legal obligation to these people, to our retirees? Do we have avenues in which we can pass through costs? Can we change their plans? What were the terms, and are they negotiable?
So, the answer to that term depends entirely on what the promises that were, that were made to the retirees, whether that was in collective bargaining agreements, in prior plans, in exit conversations, and I don't have all of that background information, but that would definitely need to be analyzed, because I think if promises were made and you terminate coverage, or pass on additional costs, you're inviting a lawsuit. But that would definitely need to be analyzed.
Is that something that's under consideration at this point? Is it being reviewed, as to what the terms?
We have not gone through, we have not sort of, for instance, going through all the past collective bargaining agreements, because they're, to David's comment about the very large number of suffixes that we have, a big reason of that is because of the different collective bargaining agreements over the years. And so, but yeah, so the quick answer is, we have not started that process at this point.
Okay. Is that something that is a planned avenue to explore?
Depends on what council, what council's consensus is, if we brought this in the past to council and for discussion, and it's not this particular council, but we have in the past, and have been directed elsewhere. So, again, that's what we're wanting to find out, what are council's thoughts, and if, whether or not they wish staff to pursue this. whether or not they wish staff to pursue this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon.
I actually have a couple more questions.
Please.
Going back to David, at our last meeting, we talked about possible buyouts. Was that explored? Is that still being explored? Do we have that as an option?
So it basically goes back to the question you just asked, if the collective, if we could make a change to collective bargaining agreement, those units, those retirees, and what promises were made. But there are entities that do provide some sort of buyout or cash amount, you know, month over month, or something like that. And oftentimes, those are intended to be utilized by, you know, sending people to the marketplace, or something like that. But if you're asking if we've done an analysis, the answer's no.
Okay. And then my last question is, how many active employees are going to fall into the same category? That are going to, as they exit, are still going to be entitled to these benefits?
Oh, I see. Oh, there we go. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mitchell, do you want to wave for the microphone for Ms. Har, then you may...
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. CEO?
David, how do you make any kind of reasonable estimate at all, given the flux in the potential marketplace for health insurance plans?
Well, we've seen significant changes, you know, with our former President Obama. I mean, we had, we had a program that, you know, obviously, was not the ACA, and you saw increases year over year. When you look at how increases have changed through the Affordable Care Act, they've been up and down, but I bet if you, if I averaged these over time, they would be about the same before the Affordable Care Act and after. Now, the dollar amount can fluctuate, because 8%, eight years ago was an 8% now.
Right.
But there's no great answer, but I would say that right now, when I'm looking at the groups I'm working with, the clients I'm working with, we're seeing increases in the neighborhood of like, probably 5% to 12%.
I guess that wasn't the basis for my question. My question was, you talked about alternative program offerings that could be existing out there.
Yeah.
How do we even begin to conjure those up if we don't know whether the President even knows?
Yeah. So that is probably the hardest thing that we're trying to deal with here. I mean, there are some things that, that aren't part of the Affordable Care Act, like Medicare Advantage isn't part of the Affordable Care Act, so the expectation is that would not be included in any, any new ideas that come out of Washington. So that's one option. Looking at consolidating our plans to one or two offerings within like a Blue Cross, for example, that I don't think would be impacted too much. But again, I have no idea what, what is going to come out, what this great plan is, so it's, until we have an idea, it's kind of like...
Okay. Now, shift back a little bit. You talked about the over 65 people going to some kind of a Medicare plan plus, like an exact fill, or some other supplemental program to Medicare. In those cases, does the city then incur the liability to pay for the Medicare costs, or does that fall to the individual?
So, a lot of, it depends on, it depends on the situation. So a Medicare Advantage program, what you're essentially doing is you're taking Medicare A, B, and D, and then you're taking a supplemental plan, and you're smashing them all together into this one product. And that is, there's a premium charge for that. And so, it could be where the city would incur that full cost, or there could be some sort of cost share arrangement developed between the city and the retirees. So you could be all over the board. If you're not in a Medicare Advantage program, then there are some premiums that potentially are paid directly to the government, like for Medicare Part B.
Right.
And then there's supplemental that could be charged directly by like a Blue Cross, and so you're getting kind of hairy and complicated. Are you going to give, like, I don't think the government's going to accept a payment from the city directly to Medicare to cover that Part B, so then you're talking about paying those to the employee.
Right.
And then to the government, and that gets pretty hairy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Fair enough.
Yes, thank you. Well, so I, I think there are lots of interesting ideas and possibilities, tantalizing maybe is better word, in what you presented. And it seems to me that at least some of them, our hands may be tied by the conditions under which people who've already retired, retired. So is it possible to look at which of these things we might explore further? I mean, it seems, well, or it seems to me that figuring out what options we have based on what the, what the understandings, agreements, contracts are with the employees is, would be the first step. I mean, having a retiree healthcare committee seems like something we could do no matter what, but all of the other things, including consolidating offerings and anything else, seems like the basic first step is to figure out what we even have the possibility pursuing. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, I think an analysis of, of the collective bargaining agreements can certainly be done. Obviously, I don't think that comes for free, so we have to make sure that the council really wants to evaluate this before we start spending money that we don't necessarily want to be spending, just because we want to figure that out. I mean, if we're committed to this, then yeah, we do the analysis, we pay for the analysis. And then beyond that, you're absolutely correct, our hands may be, may be handcuffed, and we may be blindfolded, you know, and we may be underwater. I mean, there's, there's a whole level of complications here with what, what do our agreements let us do? What's the government in Washington going to let us do? And then what's the new program that's going to be potentially forced upon us?
Okay, I'll just start banging my head on the table in a minute.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, well, no, I mean, I understood that. Thank you.
Mr. Gierba.
Yeah, just a clarification for myself. With Medicare on our employees that are 65 and older, are they actually getting Medicare, is their insurance is covered through Medicare, correct? And then we're paying for a supplement that offsets any of their other expenses? Or are they totally covered under private insurance?
I think much in the way of Celine, you're doing both, actually. So you have a group of individuals that are on a Medicare Advantage program, so that's where everything's smashed together, and there's one premium being paid to Blue Care Network. And then you have other ones that have Medicare Parts A, Parts B, and then they have a supplemental plan through the city that's not a Medicare Advantage plan in any way.
Well, that's what I want to make sure. I didn't, I want to make sure that Medicare was paying for at least the 80% proportion. We're not paying all of that care, so...
Yeah, Medicare, I mean Medicare is the primary for a retiree.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that was still true.
You'd probably be disappointed when you see the pricing of the supplemental. You know, I, when I work with people where Medicare becomes primary, and they're expecting this big windfall for the premiums to go down, usually, they're not happy with me after the conversation, because it's sometimes, you know, the decrease is minimal, sometimes it's exactly the same, and then there's some circumstance where the cost actually goes up, and people are shaking their head at me and say, you know, you're a criminal? I'm not a criminal. This is what, this is just what reality is.
Well, I know. My father went from $122 a month to a potential $300 one, to a $58 Medicaid Advantage plan that takes it all into place.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I've been playing this whole game for him, myself. For my own question is, you know, we've looked at what happened in Detroit, but that was through bankruptcy, in terms of that. From our legal position, I guess that's my question. If the state comes forward, the way they're approaching it right now, that they may nullify all the, all bargain contracts, and even our city expectations, we may be able to ride along on that. Is that true?
So are you asking if the state does something so that governmental entities are no longer able to provide?
Well, no, from the perspective of, they may say that we as a state are either going to solve this problem, or we're going to come in and step in and say, you know, all these conditions that were put in place, we're allowing the communities now to go a different route, in terms of going like what we're saying, that even though we may have stuff in collective bargaining agreements, the city would be available to go into a different route.
I'm not familiar with the state's direction in that, but if the state came up with a law that said you're able to do something different, then you, depending on what the terms of that law...
Okay. Because that's kind of what, and my understanding is kind of what's coming out of the Republicans' approach and so forth, is they're looking to accept for maybe firemen and police, which has been an issue forever. The other aspect that I'm looking at from the perspective of also understanding, we're talking about health insurance right now, but what about the life insurance? We've got life insurance that significantly went up, and we provide that as part of the retirees' thing. What is our legal requirement to continue to maintain, to allow them to continue to maintain a very large insurance policy where we would basically, at a certain age, reduce it to a certain dollar amount? Can we change that?
So again, that's entirely dictated by the contracts in what, what the promises were to the retirees. I've been involved in a lot of different municipalities, in different scenarios, going through different retiree healthcare options. And some of them, you mentioned buyouts. Sometimes employers will offer a buyout and say, you know, we're terminating coverage, we're going to do a buyout, and your options to take the buyout are to get nothing. Again, potential lawsuit, you'd want to analyze that, but I just wanted to throw that out With the life insurance, you can change it if the contract allows you to. It depends on what the contract says.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, just from my perspective, I'm just saying, what I've been saying for the last, I guess, 20 years I've been on council, is I'm looking to consolidate, not necessarily put more costs on them, but we are getting to a point where 17 options is ridiculous. There's no organization that allows that. And I know there's going to be individuals that are upset about it, but we as a council have to make a decision to move forward, and if we want to maintain and not go bankrupt like every other organization, we either sit by and hope the state does something, but I don't know what's going to happen on that at this point.
Could I just, no, comment, just to piggyback on that? The, for me, the point of all of this discussion and thinking about this is so that the city remains on a solid footing to be able to provide benefits for everyone, and, and to find a way to do that where, where we stay solvent and we can continue to provide a benefit. Maybe not the exact benefit that's happening now, but, but it's, it's about keeping the ability to provide the benefit.
Let me say this, because we're running short on time here. And I hope that there would be no objections to this, but, you know, I approach these issues like most issues from sort of a 30,000-foot perspective. So I say, you get your little committee together. You look at contracts, probably going back several decades. Of course, we're all cognizant of what the state may or may not do. Just for the record, Dave, I heard the Obamacare replacement was going to be terrific from the President. Not great, so I just want to state that for the record. But I, I think you evaluate this, but I think the goal ought to be, and some of these comments were made by Mr. Gierba and others, one, there are far too many plans. That needs to be simplified. Two, we do need to put an emphasis on controlling costs while at the same time providing our retirees with an exceptional service and benefit. And the third thing that I would add is that, and Dave, you'd be more of an expert on this than I am, but from the research I've done, this is sort of beyond debate, that when consumers have skin in the game related to their healthcare costs, not only does it, does it allow for better management of the cost, but ultimately, and this is, I think, even more important, is better decisions are made, more strategic, smart decisions are made. So I think with those items in mind, I think you pursue this, research it, come back with a recommendation. And again, I would hope there would be no objection from, from the deists. Good? And we appreciate everyone's time very much. Okay? Thank you for leading this, Mickey Joe. Okay? If there's nothing further, noting the time, we're going to proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this work meeting agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his name and address for record. I would ask for brevity, I can't demand that, but I would ask for it, and please speak into the microphone.
Mary Hess. You know, what's sad is that this retirement bill, it's just happened overnight. And in my 22 years on council, I definitely wanted us to put money into retirement. And I think when the council comes up with a budget this year, that should be addressed to the public. The one question I had is when we're talking about two people having the same insurance, does the one spouse get extra money then? That's one comment, that it used to be, okay? And then the other thing was, I just, I think that the public should be aware that this is something that definitely is going to be a high toll on the public. Thank you.
Indeed, thank you, Mrs. Hess. This is a big issue, and we're committed to managing this and resolving some of these matters in the most prudent and fiscally responsible ways. So we do appreciate your comments. Are there any other citizen comments? There are none, and the chair would seek a motion to adjourn this work meeting at 7:30 PM. Moved by CEO, seconded by Gierba. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.